Good afternoon, everyone. I will call this workshop and special meeting to order. If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Council, we're here this afternoon to discuss and interview individual city council, I'm sorry, city manager candidates. And I thought it most appropriate if we had the candidate sit at the table rather than stand at the lectern. If that's all right with council, we'll go ahead and go forward with that. Please, sir, come forward. Our first candidate this afternoon is Paul Carlisle. Mr. Carlisle, if you could introduce yourself to the council and the public, let us know a little bit about who you are and what you think of the city, Sebastian, and why it is you would like to be our next city manager.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. Again, I'd like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude for having the opportunity to come before you and present myself to this council for consideration of your next city manager. I know there will be some great shoes to fill with Joe's departure, Mr. Griffin. So, my background, I've got 36 years in public administration, public government, everything from starting a new city in Wellington that was a special 298 district to full incorporated in 96 and worked on that process. Prior to that, I was in site development and did, I actually built some of the infrastructure in Wellington when I was in site development. So, I have a big history in public works, engineering, planning, and also in site development. So, I bring a unique perspective to city manager where I understand the department in planning and zoning and all of those departments, understanding the wants and needs of those departments, having worked in most of them. I think Sebastian offers a great opportunity for a community that's sustainable, that's established, has a great staff. From the ones that I've spoken to, I think you all have done a marvelous job, and Mr. Griffin, putting together a great team. And I think I can bring some outside ideas on how to do things and looking at new ways and augmenting some of the ways you do business today. I think we can move the town forward and solve some of the issues that you're facing.
All right, wonderful. I guess we'll go individually and ask questions. And is there any council member up here who wishes to go ahead and start with questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Dodd, go ahead.
Okay, I just basically have two. Will you give us some information about your grant background, types of grants that you've been successful in getting, and how they apply to the city?
Yes, so grants, I've done several different types of grants and also federal, state, not federal but state appropriations. I've been successful in several community development block grants for economic development and for neighborhood enhancement. I just received a $700, a $700 city, small cities grant to expand sewer services into a blighted area of our county to try to get that into a position to be redeveloped. Appropriations from the state, I've been with the legislators and got and received funds for septic-to-sewer conversion for economic development, rural infrastructure grants to build roadways and utilities into what is our industrial park to build a 40,000 square foot training center. So, I was able to get grants from the rural infrastructure grant from the state for that. So, I'm very familiar with grants, grant processes. Our E-911 operation is all run with state grant money throughout the county. So, been very successful in grant acquisition and management.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to look at the current contract that we have with Joe Griffin?
I did not find that. I'd not find his contract. I looked and looked, but I don't know why I couldn't find it, but I tried to find it, but I didn't. I wasn't able to locate it, I apologize.
So, he hid that real well, didn't he?
He might have. I just wasn't diligent in finding it, but I did look at your budget and I've looked at several of your meetings online and I've looked at a lot of different things and seen budget committee meetings and things like that. So, I'm familiar with your budget processes and that, but I did not find his contract.
Okay. The only, there's a couple of clauses in the contract that I don't know if they create issues or not. One's a residency clause, and it's not in our charter, but it is in the contract that we have with our current city manager. So, I just want to make sure that that and the, just the basic health insurance and so forth is not an issue, any of those things that you have, because he's basically treated like any other city employee. There's not a special clause set up for him to have different insurance, different retirement and so forth.
And that is very common in most instances. Those are all things that I think are not insurmountable to discuss. I think those are all valid considerations.
All right, good. Thank you. That's my question.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Kinschen, do you have any questions?
Paul, what are your feelings about how much technology is involved in a city to keep the public informed?
I am the worst for Facebook. I'm not a big Facebook, Twitter, though I know that that is a big outreach for citizens. And I know that the citizens, a lot of them are, they're bound to Facebook and Twitter. And I think those are important ways, and I have staff that does do that for me now, and I would hope that the city has staff. It's not that I can't do it, I'm just not a big, I like technology and I'm very up on technology, I'm just not a big Twitter, Facebook person. But that is a way, and during the hurricane, during Irma, Twitter and Facebook was the way we got all of our information out. And it got it out, and our emergency management department did that and was very successful in getting adequate and updated information. Even evacuation orders and removal evacuation orders were on the spot. So, I think it's a very important tool, but it needs to be used wisely, and there needs to be some monitoring of that so that the information that's put out is accurate and not just spur of the moment and then it's, oh, because when you have to retract something, it never gets retracted.
Okay, strong fiscal management is something that we're always looking for in this position. Please describe your most challenging budgeting situation.
Well, where I'm currently at, we're what we call a fiscally constrained county because of our population and the makeup of our lands. The majority of our lands fall under agricultural exemption, so we are at a point where we can't raise taxes to raise additional dollars. So, we literally have to live within our means. So, creative budgeting and the grants are a big part of how we manage. And prior to my coming to Glades County, they hadn't give raises to employees in years. We were able to give a small stipend bonus and raises throughout my term there. Part of that was due to some development that we were able to bring in and raise the tax base, but also because of being able to get the property values up. So, I know the city's big on going to roll back. We couldn't go to roll back because we have, we had, we had an issue where we have to, we can't raise taxes and lowering taxes is really not an option at that point. So, that's our challenge is to continue to do more with less. And why I say more with less, because we're in Glades County, the state's constantly coming, taking lands off the tax roll to put water storage and putting lands in conservation, which produces that tax value. So, we're always, every year, reevaluating our tax base and how we can manage that with shrinking infrastructure, shrinking tax numbers and expanding infrastructure.
How will you go about identifying our organization's strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities for improvement? And once you find them, how will you change them?
And that's a big challenge, and you need to, you need to take a little bit of time and not go in there with wholesale changes. You need to evaluate each department, what their functions are, what the city council's objectives are, and are we meeting those? And if we're not meeting those, what can we do to correct it? And it's going to take a leader that's able to make those tough decisions, and I'm willing to do that. It's the leader that's able to recognize that there are positive things that may not be getting to the council. You may not be getting all that information. They may be doing positive things, and it may or may not have been to you. I'm not making, I'm making some assumptions there, but we need to make sure everybody has all the information and that we can look at that information, make sure that the goals that we've set for the department are realistic, that the goals that the council sets are doable, so that we don't set ourselves up for failure. We want our goals and objectives to be challenging, but they don't need to be unobtainable.
Thank you.
What's your experience with CRAs?
I had CRAs and it ran much the same way your CRA does. And when I was town manager in Lake Park, we did the same thing. We did facade and drainage improvements and signage grants. So, I'm very familiar with that and understand the importance of it. I will tell you, the legislators for the last two years have tried to do away with CRA, so it's something we're going to have to continue to look at. So, I have, I have a lot of experience with that.
Yeah, and should the amendment, the constitutional amendment to increase the homestead exemption in Florida pass, there will be some difficulties financially. How would you look forward to that and maybe head it off or try to tackle it at the time?
And so, and that's a tough one, although I have no doubt that will pass. That's, and no one's going to vote, not vote for a tax cut, as we've discussed. You know, we've really got to look at our budgeting process, really delve into it and see, I had mentioned in our interviews, we need to look at departments' wants and departments' needs. I'm not saying they aren't working bare bones. I don't have enough information to say whether they are or they aren't, but efficiencies are always key. I know that some of the things that Mr. Griffin has done to replace fleet and replace some of that stuff, though it sounds a big expense on the front end, it reduces your overall maintenance costs on the back end, reduces your downtime. So, those will be cost savings, so they won't look like hard dollars, but they will be realistic savings and lost productivity in those things. So, you can look at all of those items, and there may be a time when the board may need to consider not going to roll back rate. I know that's a big discussion item, and it's something that would have to have a lot of vetting to go, but although, I wouldn't leave too many things off the table, though some may not be as accepted by the residents as others, but, and I'm not a big tax raise a tax, I've not raised taxes in any community I've been in, but it's sometimes things, circumstances lend themselves to tough choices.
The infrastructure in Sebastian is often called into question, the drainage system, the roadways. We are not, in my opinion, at critical mass on that yet, but we need to make sure that we get ahead of these issues so that we don't end up in big trouble in the near future. Have you looked into the drainage situation and the road system and the infrastructure issues that we have in Sebastian? And what are your thoughts going forward?
So, I've followed the conversations both with the commission and with the Budget Review Committee and articles about the infrastructure, and it is a challenge in most communities. And swell communities are one of the most challenging, and in Wellington, we have the same exact circumstances you have. You've got grass swells, you go in and clean them out, three years later, the sod grows up and it plugs up again. So, one of the things we need to do is we need to come up with a diverse plan and figure out where the worst needs are, develop a five-year or 10-year plan, depending on the will of the commission. I would go, I would at least start with a critical five-year plan, but outline what those issues are, what your total pavement condition index is, and evaluate other opportunities and other methodologies to pave those streets and bring them up to a more sustainable or a pavement condition index that's much higher. And education and communication with the residents that swells are part of the drainage system and the expectation, and I don't have a full grasp on the community's expectations, just what I've read, that the expectation may not be the water has to be gone five hours after a rainfall. Remember, we, all this water dumps into the Indian River Lagoon, so the water, though it may not be enjoyable to be sitting there, it's providing some water quality that drains into the infrastructure, into the river, which is why we all want to be here, right? So, it's a very diverse waterway. So, we need to look at all that education, that maybe 24 hours it needs to be gone. We need to set an expectation of what the council's expectation is, but also keeping in mind that those wells are part of an overall system that create water quality, not just convenience.
Okay. Speaking of the Indian River Lagoon, many years ago, the city Sebastian went into a, really, I would call it a public-private partnership with the working waterfront. I believe it's helped to rejuvenate the Indian River Lagoon and helped really be a spark to set off the development along that lagoon. What are your thoughts on the public-private partnerships, understanding that your thoughts would most likely follow whatever the concept the council was putting forward, but in the public-private realm, do you see opportunities to get funding, additional funding out there to pay for some of the projects we may need? And then potentially go to the state for the grants that Mr. Dodd was talking about earlier?
I can tell you that most every grant have a scoring where, when you can get public-private partnership in there, they like to see private dollars, community dollars, and their dollars work together. It's not one, anytime you can get partnerships, even partnerships with other communities such as tiger grants, if you can get counties, cities, and other counties involved in a grant, the more people that get involved, the more industry and different organizations get involved and have a stake in the game, the grant writers like that because they know it's going to be more sustainable, that the dollars will be used more wisely because you have more people invested in the positive outcome of those dollars. So, yes, a county can apply for a grant, or a city can apply for a grant, and they can have matching dollars, but if you can get private dollars invested in that, they really like to see private. And I've seen that in every thing that I've written and where we've had other, excuse me, other entities involved. So, it's a very, it's a positive.
And my last one in this round of questioning, the, the, the working relationship with the business community or the Chamber of Commerce or individual businesses with the city is critical. What are your thoughts on the, how you, your staff would interact or work with the business community in Sebastian?
Well, they're the, they're the lifeblood. They're what brings people in and they spend the money in the business community. So, that business community has a strong voice, and if they're not successful, we're not successful. They have to be, they, just like we talked about with the reduction in the, in the homestead, they won't see the reduction in the tax. So, we need to be there to support them and not put together regulations that would adversely affect them and aren't really warranted because small businesses are the heart of America and they're struggling. And so, what we can do to help support them and as far as the city and our policies and direction and codes that we pass and ordinances that we pass, need to take a long look at that and see what the, not only what the positive goal of that is, but what would be the negative outcome of that. Look at both sides of all those regulations and how we deal with the businesses and be open to their ideas. One of the things that we did up in Rock Hill is we would have a meeting with 10 or 15 businesses, we'd have a lunch and we'd sit down and talk about it. It wasn't part of a Chamber of Commerce, it was the city working with key businesses and stakeholders, and they started investing more in the community because they felt like they had a voice at the table. And I think that's a big part, is they need to know that they have a voice at the table, and they're not just being used as a, as an attraction, but they're part of the solution.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for going so long, Mr. McParland.
You didn't leave me much here.
I apologize.
We're sorry.
You know, me and Mr. Carlisle, we had a great conversation this morning, covered a lot of things, and Ms. Kinschen had mentioned part of the SWOT, the SWOT analysis, I guess, when you come in, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and the threats that are facing our community, as you see them when you come in. Now, will you be sharing that with us individually as you assess things?
Absolutely, because I think you all need to be informed of what's going on. You can't make good decisions as a board if you don't have all the information. You've got to be up to date. I'm not going to bore you with every day-to-day little tidbit of information, but in critical, the critical path things that have to happen in a city, you need to know if there's, if there's a problem there, if there needs to be a change. And I'm a decision maker. I'll make decisions and I'll live by those decisions, right, wrong, or indifferent, but the fact is, is if you don't make a decision, that's a wrong decision. So, you've got to make, you've got to make things happen, and you can't, you can't stall those things, but you all need to be informed. You do not need the press calling you, what's going on with this? You need to be able to have the answers to that if all possible.
Okay. And then again, we touched on, I mean, you have a tremendous background in grants as well as lobbying the state, which is, you know, I think is exceptional. Can you tell us your views on strategic planning and then following the plan and completing projects?
Strategic plans, again, that's, that's your goals and objectives, but they need to be realistic, as I said earlier. So, the council should set the direction they want the city to go, and then we need to find measurable items to put in a strategic plan and then quarterly check on those and see how we're progressing. Don't wait till the end of the year and say, did we meet those goals, didn't we? We need to be quarterly checking. If it's, you know, as simple as you're supposed to replace 500 feet of sidewalk a year, how are you progressing with that? But we need to have realistic goals and strategic goals, put those in, and monitorize those in a plan, and then we can use those to help fix the budget. And without a plan, your, your budget's going to be a maintenance budget. Your strategic plan is your future and how you want to plan to budget for your future. That's my understanding, my opinion on that.
All right, thank you. I mean, he answered everything else that I had. You guys brought it up.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Edino?
Go ahead. So, I'd love to ask you a bunch of questions, but pretty much everything has been answered. What I'd like to bring up, because it was something that we had in your interview, we were talking about annexation, and can you just kind of recap what we talked about in regards to what happens when you don't have it, when you don't increase your taxes and things like that? Because I really liked the way that you presented yourself with that.
Sure. So, one of the things I say is you, there's a difference between growth and expansion. When you grow within the city, you, you either have to increase density or you have to redevelop, and that's all good, and cities need to do that. But when you look at expansion, you know, I put it this way, you're either progress or regress. You have to look at a way to, if you just left everything inside a box and didn't allow anything to change, things are going to deteriorate, infrastructure's going to deteriorate, your housing market's going to deteriorate, things are going to get older. So, you've got to plan for that. And then for the expansion part, you need to look at that because that's your new dollars. Those are new dollars coming into the community. As new businesses come in, you can recycle that dollar that goes in. The employee goes to the store and he buys groceries, and he goes to the restaurant and he buys dinner. Those are internal dollars. You have to bring in new dollars, and new dollars is what revitalizes the community. As you bring in development from the outside or bring in, or annexation from the outside, those are new dollars. Those lands are going to develop, someone's going to develop them. Should you reap the benefits of that? I would think that would be a goal of the council, that you would want to see those lands where you can control your own destiny. When residents have concerns, if it's going in the county, although residents are also county residents, city residents or county residents, they don't, they will have a much stronger voice on the future of development in a city when the city has control of that development rights. If that makes sense.
Absolutely. Appreciate that.
I don't think anything else from council. I thank you. Would you like to give us a closing statement?
Again, I do appreciate the opportunity. I hope that I've adequately answered all your questions, thoughts, concerns, ideas. Again, I think I bring a lot to the city. I think I have the experience to, in my, in my portfolio, that will bring some new ideas and paths for the city, and I'd hope that you would consider me for your next city manager.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming and applying and being a part of this process. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, members of the mayor, members of the council.
Counsel, while, while we're waiting, we're scheduled for a break after this next candidate, and if, if we're going to go through these in 25 minutes or so, you know, there's probably no need for that break, if you agree. We'll just go ahead and plug, plug forward.
Yeah, we can power through.
Yeah, if at any time someone wants a break, just go ahead and let us know, and we'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you. And council member McParland, I'll let you go first this time so you can ask the most questions. How are you?
Good, thank you.
All right, first, let me go ahead and thank you very much for being a part of this process. We appreciate you being here this afternoon. If you'd like to go ahead and make an opening statement, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you feel Sebastian would be a good fit for you.
I have got 20-plus years in local government in Illinois, all of it in Illinois, but reading your ideal candidate and the challenges that Sebastian has in the profile, I just believe some of my experience and background is a good match and a good fit, and I think that my background with managing growth and team building and some leadership and budget skills fit very nicely into what some of the desires the brochure had, and I welcome the opportunity and very grateful to have the opportunity to be here today.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Mitch McParland?
All right. Mr. Rooney, again, thank you for the wonderful time this morning. If you can elaborate on your background in obtaining grants?
In Chicago especially, because it's a regional, grants are administered on a, on a region basis, sixth county of the Chicago greater area. So, you learn, and there, there's a very direct path of how you must submit your applications with engineering plans and your budget, and a lot of times the focus is, how is this going to impact your community but also the region? So, working with your planner and your engineering consultants, a lot of it is, it's transportation federal monies, and we've just learned, and I would show as an example, you just know what the format to be successful, and you follow and hire consultants that help the staff put together a plan that'll do that. And I would say, just recently, we bonded debt of $10 million, and we did $28 million of road and infrastructure improvements. Three 19 grants, I've seen that you've used those here because of the environmental impacts and stormwater. It's a great program, and you just, and that's one of the more direct ones to show a benefit to not just the community but to the greater ecosystem, and you qualify for those. So, I just have a wealth of experience in that regional planning aspect and working with competent planners and engineers to target your application for that. And you can do that somewhat with economic development as well. Know what is rewarded, and you don't always win the first time, but you learn a lot in the feedback to be successful in the second and third iteration because you're always, every cycle, going back in.
Then your experience in strategic planning?
Yes, in each of the communities I've been in, we've had a need to do that. It's just a timing issue because those documents, you know, they have a shelf life and they need to be updated. And I've worked in communities where we've done it twice in seven years because of the huge changes going on to the external environment on the community. But strategic planning is just, that's the key, is to get the council to focus not on the one- and two-year budget focus that is the nuts and bolts of the granular effort of the day-to-day operation, but to think of, where do we want to be in five to seven years? And what are some of those big, big ideas out there that could impact external variables on the city? And it, and then, because everybody can see them, but they don't always agree on what those impacts would be. So, a lot of times I've worked with outside facilitators to come in because oftentimes the manager, just like the council, is so fixed on the here and now and the, and future, and sometimes you have to say, you know, the emperor has no clothes, and sometimes it's good to hire a consultant to say that, you know, because you can, they can say things that the manager's got to work with the same five of you the next day, you know, on another local issue. But, and, look, Jesus left Galilee to preach because he wasn't received in his hometown. So, I don't have the, such a huge ego that I'm, I'm going to be able to always do that, especially if there's a major innovation or major change that we're going to be looking at that's controversial. It is good to bring an outside force in to be that, it's like a referee or an umpire at a, at a game. They've got some expertise at facilitation, but they also can say, you know what, mayor, we got to let Billy have a chance to talk and let his perspective, and then you get those issues on the table, and then you got to do is, you got to vote, and you got to have that understanding that we're going to respect the outcome of the majority and listen, and it gets a good chance for the public when you do the strategic planning to give their, their input, and that affects the outcome too. But a facilitator is But a facilitator is something that's been very useful, but, and I feel that's a great opportunity in the community here, because the strategic plan, comp plan, would go hand in hand along with the land use plan that you're looking to update. And I've got some experience in that, and I think the community's got some issues with managing growth and how to deal with the airport. You've got some big issues that need to be decided and a vision given, and what that does for the manager is then gets the staff and the manager aligned with the political reality of what the council wants to go. And that alignment's very helpful for the staff, so we focus our efforts on the key aspects of where the council wants to take the community.
And as you would be coming from out of state, how long do you realistically think it would take you to get your feet, you know, be up and running?
You know, I think managing and leadership experience, it's the same in any kind of organization, whether it's a community of 10,000 or 100,000. The scope is different, and the issues you have in Florida with transparency, some of those issues, I'd be leaning on the lawyer and the staff initially. But it still comes down to that interpersonal skill of getting along with people, managing people to get things done. And I don't think, I've been the new guy at three different organizations in municipal government in my career. And in the military, you don't get to stay in a leadership position more than two and a half years, usually two years. So, I've done that rotation many a time to be the new guy coming in, and there's just a process. You have to respect what's there, work with the staff, but I don't think it would take, you know, two, three months. I would feel very at home, especially with what I've spoken with Joe and the senior staff. They're very solid. I think they would get me honed in on the day-to-day operation very quickly. I think the time it would take is getting to know the stakeholders of the community and the five of you, to make sure I was fully understanding what it is, the wishes you had on moving forward with any new initiatives. That's where the time would be. The staff, I'm very confident they will calibrate me and lock me in pretty quickly. Thank you.
All right. Yes, thank you. Albert?
How are you doing, Mr. Rooney? I know we didn't really, I didn't ask you a lot of questions. We spent a lot of time talking back and forth and not really getting into the specifics. I just have a couple of quick questions for you. How do you feel about implementing a zero-based budget?
I'm sorry?
A zero-based budget. How do you feel about implementing that?
As I understand that, that it'd be, it's successful, because you, every year, have to justify what you're putting in the budget. So, it's almost like parking everything in the parking lot. It doesn't get back in the building unless it's still valid and justified. There's great value in doing that, because a lot of times in government, we just keep doing things, and we've sometimes have forgotten why we started to do it. It just becomes routine and automatic. And doing that, if it's truly done in that fashion on a big level, I think you really root out things and stop doing things that are no longer a priority. Or you de-emphasize them, because you have to still do some certain things, but you don't prioritize that in a staffing and time or resources. So, it's very valid.
And then, just one other one. You know, there was mention earlier, and I think we discussed this a little bit, about the homestead exemption increasing. How do you feel about annexation and that in regards to increasing the tax base?
I would, you know, just, as the outsider looking at it from the outside in, I would be very much an advocate that annexation is your future, economically and the budget, to managing the growth, so it doesn't overwhelm the quality of life you have with both traffic and just that sense of place. But if you don't do the annexation, the growth will happen. It'll just happen, and somebody else will control it. And you'll have the negative impact without the positive. So, I think the annexation is the future viability budget-wise and vitality of the community.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. I just have one. Have you had an opportunity to look at the contract that we have with our current city manager? I'm asking that question of everybody.
No.
And I expect the answer to be no.
No.
Joe hid that contract very well, but...
No, no. I did not do that.
Basically, within our contractual structure, there is a requirement that the city manager live in Sebastian, and there are standard employee retirement plans, health plans, and so forth, same as all the employees have. Do you see any issue with having a contract similar to that?
No, I'm very comfortable with that concept. That's pretty universal in our business, I think.
Okay. And are you anticipating that there might be some form of a long-term severance structure within that that protects?
Yeah, I believe that that's, those type of things are standard, whether it's, and I've done three months as an intro, and then after three years, or five, or 10 years, it steps up sometimes, but that's a negotiation that is ongoing.
Right, right. I just wanted to make sure there weren't any real issues with that. Okay.
No, not at all.
All right. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you.
What experience do you have in developing or implementing policies and programs to make a better green or sustainable community?
That has, in the last few years, become a, very much a hot-button issue. And one of the things I've done just recently, I've worked on a lakefront, Lake Michigan community, so even though that green initiatives hadn't started 25 years ago, or even 20 years back, the lake, because it's the drinking water for the whole metropolitan Chicago, 11 million people, it's always had its focus in a place of recreation, much like here at the lagoon, the river system. It's just, it is something that you always have in the forefront of every aspect of your public works department primarily. It started affecting the way, up in Chicago, we use a lot of salt. That goes in the storm sewer and goes right out to the lake, because it's on the beach. So, we've changed the way we've done snowplowing and a little bit up there because of that and that. So, but one of the things I've done recently in Carpernsville, that because the green initiative has become such a political hot issue, and Chicago being a very progressive democratic community, they had a regional compact for sustainability. And I've started to attend those meetings, and we recently, a year ago, adopted some of their sustainability compact. And it's not mandates as much as best practices, good initiatives. And you get the book, and then you pick and choose what you can do in public works, community development for planning purposes. And there are just a lot of best practice ideas that they call green initiatives. But they're real sustainable and really best practices for planning that tie into storm sewers and how you set up lift stations. And, I mean, it's very detailed, but it's really just a primer for best practices. But they labeled it to make it, you know, politically sound good, called it sustainable and green initiatives. But they're just, some of them are just reasonably best practices to do infrastructure in a cost-effective today, but five years and 10 years from now. But they do have green initiative to it, but it really is, a lot of it is best practices.
One other question. Where do you see technology as part of the city's everyday events? Technology?
Technology? It is just such a value-added to make, I mean, if you think 20 years ago, that was, cities barely had their first desktop computer. And look where we are at today with the technology and what we can do with budgets and presentations of trends with the financial data. I mean, it was all driven, and that's why a lot of times the finance department was, in many areas, in charge of IT. And then, it branched out of there as it grew and it's out of its infancy. But technology can be used as a multiplier effect for more effective management of every department, because it just cuts down on the time that you spend on routine things, and you can present information to the public, to the staff, and to the elected officials at budget time, where it's so much easier, because you have quantifiable, provable-out data points. And I think technology, the investment in technology and the training to use it is just a value-added program for any community, and it's not money that's spent unwisely, because it, return on that investment is just great. It helps even the guys out in the field with code, as well as the, you know, tracking trends in a different area or a house, and the laborers in public works.
Thank you.
I just, I think that, I could go on and on and get a little too granular about all the strengths that brings to just the folks out in the laborers and the public works that you wouldn't think of, but it improves their jobs and the ability for them to be better servants of the taxpayers' resources.
Thank you.
The city Sebastian is challenged with some infrastructure issues. You've only been here for a couple of days, but you've had an opportunity to tour the city and get around a little bit. What do you see as some of the big issues that we're going to be facing, infrastructure-wise? And what is your experience, and how do you foresee the city going forward and dealing with some of those issues?
Well, I think you had recent meetings where you, in the budget, where you talked about the roads, roads. I can just tell you, folks, there's, your roads are great. Some of the roads that are on the top of the list to be redone, they wouldn't make our list in Chicago in any community. But you've got that demand near the river and that unique quaintness that you want, so I get why you're doing it. We wouldn't redo that road unless there was a water line or a storm sewer that we had to disrupt to do it. So, you've got that, the beauty of that situation, but the stormwater, because of the subtropical, you know, latitude line, you know, that you're, you have rain, and it comes down in buckets. You've got to take care of that, the stormwater, and not have it impact. And Joe was very gracious in showing all of us some of that, and I've seen that, because I've worked in communities that didn't have curb and gutter. So, they didn't have a formal stormwater. They had the ditch, like many of yours are, the swale system. And inevitably, homeowner A does something or doesn't upkeep the pipe under his driveway, and then that backs up and causes all kinds of problems downstream. And then, you've got your canal systems with the bulkheads. And you've got, everything's got a shelf life in public works. And the pipe waterline might last 50 or 75 years, depending on how it was constructed and the land that was put in and deteriorate. You've got to just respect when the public works director and the staff come in and say, the life of that bulkhead for that stormwater system is at the end of its life in five or 15 years, and you start planning. And I think that stormwater is probably what I would say, from watching some of your meetings and just quickly eyeballing the community in that short time, I think that's going to be one of your big issues. And I would commend Joe. If I, I would feel very fortunate that he fell on his sword to ask for the meeting to discuss raising that fee to address that issue. And that will all be, staff will bring the details out, and there'll be some science to that, but there always will be the art in that managing and leading that process, because government has to do what people can't do for themselves. And the normal citizen cannot take care of stormwater. So, the local government has to do that. So, I think it's tough to be you at this point in time, where that issue, that butcher's bill has come and due, that you have to start planning for the next 10, 15 years, to pay for some of those improvements, because they are wearing out and they need, the silt fills the canal. And I don't want to get too detailed, you know it better than I do, but I think it's a necessary part of government to say unpopular things and explain it and educate the citizenry why government now has to take care of something. It's an education process and just a communication issue, I think, though, because once people understand it, and they will in about the next, you know, few weeks and months, as it rains hard. They forget about it, yes, in your dry season, but it comes back.
Well, some of them haven't forgot about it, because some of them still have the issues. But I appreciate that answer. CRAs. What's your experience with CRAs?
I, we do not have CRAs in Illinois, but what we have is tax increment financing districts, which function basically in the financial way in a similar fashion, where that funds are restricted to be used in a certain plan, that's a documented plan, and that's all it can be spent on, because it is tax money, still. And luckily, you're used to running the budget, you get to also run the CRA, and what gets approved and doesn't in the CRA. And I think it's a great economic development tool, because if you didn't have that set-aside money, it's very difficult to sit there and the staff to say, let's take general fund money and do X improvement for beautification on Rivers Drive or at the park. But with the CRC, you can help businesses and invest, and we call it the but-for test in Illinois. But for the TIF money or the CRC money, that business might not come in. And that's, it's your incentive to improve the community. And it works great. I mean, I've done 450-room Westin Hotels on a former riding stable junkyard up in the Chicago area, and that, it was $22 million of local investment, but it's, in 10 years, made every projected revenue outflow and job creation for the local area that, but for that TIF assistance, that hotel would never have came, and it would still be a rundown riding stable and the junkyard on the edge of town. So, if it's done right, and the staff does their work, along with a consultant, you can do great things with the investment, because you're investing in yourself.
What do you see as the importance of intergovernmental relations, county, city, municipality, municipality, our state legislatures? How do you foresee building a relationship with those individuals? And going forward, what is your view on those, the intergovernmental relations?
Thank you for that. That's such an easy question. You've got to do it. I don't understand, after being in this business, why some communities aren't more out front doing intergovernmental relations, but also these agreements? Because why should every community, when we have fire departments individually in Illinois, but fire ladder trucks, the 100-foot ladder truck that's really neat, it's 1.2 million. Why does every community that joins each other and they work intergovernmentally on fires, why does every community need a $1.2 million ladder truck, other than ego for a parade? Because it's used once every seven to 10 years. So, you've got to figure out, and there's equipment like VACCON trucks in the public works department, and I don't mean to pick on fire, because they just have the most expensive equipment than any, you know, department. They do great jobs and they need the equipment, but you don't need seven of them in a 20-mile radius. Intergovernmentally, you can address that by working together and creating, but the key is to have the document, working with the lawyer, so the staff doesn't take total ownership of the agreement. It has to have political accountability back, that you don't just write a check to the neighboring community for a service. There's got to be this checks and balances where you see what you're still getting, but it is so necessary to do things intergovernmentally, because it helps you, as I spoke earlier, getting grants even, if you've got a better relationship. But you just save so much money for the taxpayer, and you can get the expertise. What we did in communities I worked in initially, government, we didn't have the technology for computers and the GIS system, the graphic information system. The county would give us the base map, but then you had to do everything locally. Well, you just didn't have the ability to buy all that technology. So, a far more affluent neighboring community and I got together, and we started out with five communities, bringing together that computer technology and the GIS primarily, and it's grown to 52 communities in 22 years. But they have that expertise of the private sector, because we've contracted with somebody that used to be in their IT department, went private, but he's got his whole business model based on this. And you don't buy the same, you know, the proprietary software. You buy it into the consortium, and the hardware costs... You buy it into the consortium and the hardware costs and the staffing expertise, you can share that. The good idea in three communities over, you just pay a portion of that cost, that intellectual knowledge. And there's multiple examples from IT to public works and fire departments and the police departments never have enough staffing for the big one if they didn't work intergovernmentally. So it can range from day-to-day operations to the political issues of regional planning and how you're going to compete collectively to bring in state and federal funds. So I just think it's the most important thing really out there that you can do as the manager is to improve that intergovernmental cooperation in agreements with your local communities as well as the county and the state.
The, the relationship of the city to our business community and our residents is incredibly important. How do you foresee the city manager, or how do you see the city manager communicating with the public and working with our business community?
The business community? I think it's very important because the local government can indirectly and unintended consequences create great burdens on the local businesses, especially small businesses. So I think having an open door and a good dialogue with the chamber and the business community is essential because, you know, we in government have answers and we have codes and bureaucracy that we must follow that is, it's an alien language culture to entrepreneurs and the mesh is not there. And I think it's incumbent upon the manager to try to break down that divide. And you have to, you have to empower the staff to not be bureaucratic because the safe thing to do in government is to follow the rules and regulations. They don't, they're not always written for the business guy's perspective or the homeowner because they're, what are they designed for? To prevent fraud, waste and abuse and control. That doesn't fit in the, in the technology of the 21st century and the speed at which people demand change. And it's hard to keep up with that change. And you really, I've, give you one example I've kind of wrote to you about is in the community development department, to tell them that the vision of the manager's office and the elected officials was, basic translation, get to yes. Use the code book. Don't violate the safety or the standards of engineering, but use the annexes and the appendices to help the person on the other side of the counter achieve what they're trying to achieve without, it will not always hinder following the code. You, you just have to use your expertise and knowledge to help them understand why we have the rules and the regulations and don't design their, their building or their improvement, but explain it. And if, and I'll reward you for that and you just have to tell them that our goal is to get to yes, not to have, you know, the, and sometimes you have to do is come back as the staff to the elected officials and say, you know what, our model code may need to be adjusted because this older part of town, it just isn't going to fit. Everybody's got to get a zoning relief, go through the zoning process. That's time, money, and they don't want to do it. So why don't we change the code to realize what it needs to be in this area? But that's difficult to do. It's easier said in two minutes here than all those hearings that have to take place to change the code at the zoning level, the plan commission.
All right, thank you. Counsel, do you have any more questions?
No.
All right, thank you. Would you like to go ahead and close?
I just want to tell you I appreciate being part of this process. It's been very enjoyable. The staff has been wonderful in getting to come here for a couple of days to kick the tires and it's a two-way street, selling the candidate on the community and the staff and the community done a great job. I would just like to close with telling you how much I really want to come to work for you all and be part of this community. It's a great, great community. It's better live than it was on paper, you know, reading about it and talking to Colin over the phone. And I'm just fortunate to have made it this far and I'm very appreciative of it. And you have a great community and I think you have a great opportunity to go and grow in a very prosperous way with maintaining what makes it a special place. So thank you for letting me be part of this process.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rooney. We very much appreciate having you here and look forward to seeing you this afternoon. One quick thing, though, you're only allowed to vote once in Florida. I don't know about Chicago, I think it's a little different up there, but once in Florida. Thank you, sir.
That's, that's another reason it'd be great to be here, too.
Okay.
I like to say that, that is another good part of having, using humor. Eats the tension. I should have had that as your first one.
Right, thank you.
That one vote is unless you live in Broward County, then you can punch a few chads if you want to.
Oh, sure. Oh, sure. Good afternoon, Mr. Erby.
Good afternoon.
Thank you very much for being here and being a part of this. Very much appreciate it. We all had an opportunity to speak with you individually earlier. If you would like to go ahead and give us an opening statement, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you like, would like to come to City of Sebastian.
Sure. I've got more than 30 years' experience in local government. Began my career as a police officer for the city of Eustis in Lake County where I spent 10 years. Won't say that I enjoyed all of it, but it was a fun time. Decided to go back to school and seek a master's degree, which I did from the University of Central Florida in public administration with an undergrad in accounting. Went to work for the city of Taveries as their first accountant. Worked there for a number of years. Went to work for the city of Maitland for three months. The city of Taveries called me and asked me to come back as their finance director where I stayed for another eight years. During that eight years, I actually became the assistant city administrator. From there, I worked on a master's degree, master's program with Troy State University. Once earning that, set off on a field as mascots, first city manager and worked there for two years. During all of this time, I also became the elected strong mayor of a small town called Mineola in Lake County. During that time, I held the position of assistant city administrator and finance director for Taveries. So I was holding three jobs. From mascot, I went to work for the Lake County Sheriff's Office as a civilian over the business sections of the sheriff's office. That lasted two years before I figured out that that wasn't where I was meant to be. Management of government is what I was meant to do, local government. I was lucky enough to land on my feet from there with the city of Umatilla where I spent nearly eight and a half years as city manager. Did great things with their airport, their CRA district and several other things. From there, I landed my current job, which is city administrator for the city of Apopka. There, I've been three years, three months. We've done quite a bit of extensive work all over the city.
I believe, Ms. Kinschen, it's your turn to go first.
Strong fiscal management skills is something that we're looking for. Can you describe your most challenging budget situation and how you handled it?
Actually, that would be the current year. We have a $124 million budget. The council decided that it needed to be basically zero inquiries to the general fund. We did not face layoffs this year, but I actually was challenged with the, the job of cutting the budget basically to the bone in the general fund. Equipment that was necessary was cut. Council gave the direction that it didn't want to raise taxes. The equipment the directors had asked for this year was very important. They need the equipment, but the council did not want to raise taxes and did not want to dip into reserves anymore than it had to. So this year, very much so. Normally, there is fat in every general fund budget, actually budgets across the entire city. This year, I can tell you a fact is that in the general fund, there is no fat. To me, it's challenging because I like to provide the best equipment possible for the employees to get the work done. Without the equipment, it's kind of difficult to do much of anything. So it would definitely be this year.
Okay. And the only other question I have is about technology. How do you feel technology fits into a city?
Anymore, you have to have it. There's, there's no doubt about it. As I explained to some of y'all today, I carry all forms of communication, including two cell phones. One's my personal, one belongs to the city. I have to stay in touch. It has to work. I will tell you, when I went to, came to the city of Apopka, our computer system was still DOS-based, green screen GUI. We were not on Outlook. I don't even remember what it was that we were on. It was hard and difficult to make a change, but it now is in the 21st century with Outlook, Windows and things of this nature. It's very important to keep up.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Evino?
Amazingly, I have nothing.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dodden?
Okay. Can you cover your experience with, excuse me, your grant experience?
My grant experience?
Yes.
I have written some small grants such as with St. John's Water Management District. Those are pretty cut and dry, fairly easy. When you start getting towards CDBG's neighborhood grants and things of this nature, I've always gone to a firm, firm in St. Augustine and used them to write it because they can be tricky, they're point-based, and the individual that I use, and I'm sure it's this way with all of them, can tell you whether or not you stand a chance of even getting any money whatsoever. The good thing about using a consultant in that regard is the fact that normally the grants that you're going for have an administrative side that will actually pay for their costs.
Okay. Apopka is a strong manager form of government. How do you see the differences between that and what we have in Sebastian, which is, I'll call it a strong city manager and a, and a council?
There's a vast difference, to tell you the truth. In the present situation, I act as a city manager, but I directly report to the mayor. I also carry out the policies of the entire city council, but I don't answer to them. It's, it's not the easiest thing in the world to do, but it gets done. Here, this government is what I was brought up under, so to speak. What I'm accustomed to is that I work for the entire council and what your policies you set are what I carry out.
All right. And have you had an opportunity to look at the current city manager's contract?
I have not, sir.
Okay. I knew the answer to that. I had to ask anyway. Basically, the contract stipulates that you'll relocate to Sebastian. It has a residency clause in it and it outlines standard metrics for the position. Do you have any issue with the standard contract format that you might have a problem with?
No, sir. Not, not at all.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Pyle?
Could you elaborate on your background in strategic planning?
I'm sorry?
Strategic planning, your background?
We go through a strategic planning process every year at Budget. The department directors are held to a standard that they have to tell us what it is going forward, that they plan to do, how they intend to get there, and it becomes a part of the budget document.
And do you have any experience with stormwater?
Quite a bit. Actually, the city of Apopka is a poster child for stormwater retention. The St. John's River Water Management District looks very favorable on the city of Apopka and the way they treat stormwater and actually resell it, or sell it, as non-potable source. It is actually, in the last three years, we've spent several million dollars augmenting and building new ponds and treatment facilities.
All right, thank you very much. A couple of questions. The, the intergovernmental relations, relations between cities and counties, municipality to municipality and city to our state legislatures, how do you see the role of the city manager in that?
It's, I see it playing very deeply. Normally, the city manager is the point of contact for any other governments calling in. You have to establish those relationships in order to help your city move forward. You can't be an island under, unto the sea. It's the same way with the state legislator. You have to know them, you have to work with them because they're the ones that will help you the most.
Okay. And then your, your history with CRAs?
CRAs, I've actually constructed one, the documents for one, and have worked with three others now. The first one that I worked with had $500,000 on it that was established and ongoing, that was just parked, wasn't doing anything. That was with the city of Umatilla. Found out that they didn't have a, really a plan. The CRA had been in existence for more than 10 years and they'd just done nothing. We went in, wrote the plan, got it approved, and the downtown district was dilapidated. Actually, Umatilla has two downtown districts. The one of them was dilapidated right around City Hall, which is looked at as the core of town. There was actually a crack house across the street operating in an upstairs apartment building. Windows were smashed out downstairs and there was quite a bit of vagrancy, empty buildings and things of this nature. I found a contractor that was working with the city of Eustis on a grant basis, asked him to come to Umatilla, look at these buildings and see if he had any interest. His financial backing allowed him to buy three of the two-story buildings where we actually paid 50 cents on the dollar to him to go in and renovate the buildings. When I left, there was a 100% occupancy rate. CRAs work well. You just have, have to have the partners to make it work.
Okay, thank you. And then the final question, the interaction between city manager and the public as well as the interaction between city manager and our business community and the Chamber of Commerce?
Chamber of Commerce, I'll take a la, or first, in my opinion, is very important. It has to be. They're your business support. I enjoy working with chambers when they enjoy working with me. And I sat four years on the South Lake Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I would very much want to be involved with this chamber. How I involve the public is through, currently, we have a PIO, but it's not necessary that you have to have a PIO. Use of media, getting the word out and then inviting them to come see me. I have an open-door policy. The only time it's not open is when it's shut. And there are occasions that you need to shut it. But I, I do practice an open-door policy both with the public, of course, the city council and all employees.
All right, thank you so much for that. If you'd like to go ahead and give a closing statement?
Sure. I, I won't make any bones about it. I've got relatives that live in Vera Beach, Fort Pierce area. I've been there many times, have never had the chance to come through here. When this came open and I started studying it before turning in applications and resumes, I couldn't believe I hadn't been here. I understand that it was small back in the day, but you've got a jewel. You really do. I'd like to be a part of it. I could do you a good service and like to move my family here.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Get through one more? One more? Let's do it.
We got to come back at five?
Yeah. Yes, I will. How are you doing?
Doing great, thank you very much.
Good. We had an opportunity to individually speak with you earlier today, and I appreciate you being here for that. Today, we're going to have a few minutes to talk with you. If you'd like to go ahead and make a statement to open, let us know a little bit about yourself and why you think Sebastian would be a good fit for you.
Great. Thank you. As you know, my name is Sue Han, and very interested in coming here to Sebastian. It's a very special place. I've been attending some of your council meetings and becoming a little bit involved in your community activities and touring your community, and the more I see, the more I like. I appreciate the very collegial atmosphere that you have here in the city of Sebastian, and I believe I would be a good fit for a number of reasons. And a few of those reasons are, I have a very strong and lengthy background in a former general development legacy community, as you know, in Palm Bay, and so I'm very familiar with the issues such as drainage, roads, utility infrastructure, all of those things that are of concern here in the city of Sebastian, I've dealt with in the city of Palm Bay. I also have a strong background in planning. I served as a staff director to the Brevard MPO for eight years, so I'm very familiar with that process as well and understand the role of the MPO in bringing revenue and resources into the city for projects such as airport improvement and transportation projects. So I think I would be a good fit. I have a good background in infrastructure, a good background in planning, finance, and city management, and I would appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Councilmember Evino.
So I just have a couple of questions for you real quick. I know we discussed this before, but since we're actually on TV, can you just explain your position on furloughs again for me, please?
I'm sorry, sir. I could not hear you.
Can you explain your position again on furloughs for me, please?
On furloughs? Well, I had some experiences with furloughs in the city of Palm Bay. We had some very significant budget deficits that I needed to work with our team to overcome when I first became city manager. Furloughs were one of the strategies that we employed after a strong collaboration among all of the department heads, looking at a variety of strategies, and that was one of them that we used. The implementation of the furloughs and the ability to even do the furloughs was a cooperative effort among the city's four bargaining units. I had spoken with each of them, let them know that I would only consider furlough days as a strategy if each of the bargaining units would agree, meaning that I would not implement furlough days for one bargaining unit, not another bargaining unit. And so all four of our bargaining units voted to accept the furlough days, and that was in concert with other strategies, including a tax increase. So we looked at a very holistic approach to resolving the budget deficit, and I felt very confident that that was a good collaborative effort among not only our bargaining units, our employees, our council, and our citizens. Everyone participated in resolving that problem.
Great. And just real quick, can you explain your position on annexation and how you feel it affects the community?
With respect to annexation, I see that as an opportunity for the city of Sebastian, but it certainly is an opportunity that comes with some strategic initiatives that we really need to consider in order to make that a very positive thing for the city of Sebastian. Annexation can be a double-edged sword, but primarily, I think, in the situation here, it's important that council retain the control over the decision-making process regarding the land use activities on your borders. And so I think generally speaking, annexation would be a very positive thing for the city, that we would be able to ensure that we got the quality development and the impacts mitigated through our own processes here at the city of Sebastian, rather than having that happen outside our borders with a body that is not under the jurisdiction of the city of Sebastian. But again, I think we certainly need to get ahead of any annexations with strong planning activities and make sure that we know what we're getting and that we can facilitate the type of development that we would like here in the city.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Kinschen?
Strong fiscal management is a requirement in this position. Can you please describe your most challenging budgeting situation and how you fixed it?
Yes, ma'am. My most challenging budget situation was one I just described, where I arrived in the role as the city manager and found that we had about a $4.5 million budget deficit. It was about 12% of the general fund budget, and I just didn't feel like it was appropriate or good for the city to simply say, okay, we're going to do across-the-board cuts. Really wanted to look at prioritizing how we were investing our resources. So even in the context of declining revenues and budget cuts, we were still making strategic investments in certain aspects of the city in order to prepare us to be more successful financially in the long term. So that really was quite an experience and a very challenging experience. Palm Bay had lost over 50% of their property values over a few-year period, and so the decline was pretty significant there.
Okay. And where do you feel technology falls in the realm of city government?
I think technology has a few roles, one of which is the communications role. And at least in my experience, in me personally, people are at different places relative to their relationship with technology. And so I think it's an important tool for the city to use to communicate with people who appreciate a high level of technology in their communication. But I don't think we can abandon some of the more traditional roles of communication for those folks who really aren't plugged in. Other aspects of technology, GIS mapping is really something that the city can benefit from. I've seen some evidence of that. I don't know the extent to which that's used here, but it's really a good way to look at things like trend analysis or comparing things like properties that have code enforcement violations as well as law enforcement incidents. And you can use mapping technology to make those types of analyses and good decision-making. So I see technology as a very strong tool for good decision-making as well.
Thank you. That's all.
Bob?
Could you tell us a little bit about your history with grant writing and obtaining, you know, grants?
Sure. I have an extensive history in that, as when my first role as Public Works Director in the city of Palm Bay really had some budget challenges even then, and so it looked for grants to do our capital projects. And it was successful in obtaining DEP grants for stormwater and trails, successful in obtaining Florida DOT grants for beautification. We also had a CRA in the city of Palm Bay and used those resources to leverage grants. I've obtained grants from the Florida Inland Navigation District, Florida Communities Trust, also have gone through the process of obtaining special legislative appropriations for specific projects. We worked on obtaining Florida DOT funding for the South Brevard Interchange, the new one that's going in between Grant and Miko Road and South Brevard. So wide variety of capital projects and resources for those capital projects through state, federal, and other grant sources.
And could you elaborate on your experience with stormwater?
Well, my first experience with stormwater in the city of Palm Bay was about maybe less than a week under the job, and I was, we had just had a really bad rainstorm, and I found myself standing in about hip-deep water at a mobile home park that was suffering from severe flooding as a result of that rain event and some stormwater deficiencies in our system. And it was at that point in time, as well as hearing from residents throughout the city, that realized that that was a fairly significant issue for Palm Bay. We had worked to try to invest more in stormwater. We ultimately initiated a stormwater utility in our community. That stormwater utility at the time was not on the tax bill. It was simply part of the utility bill, which made collections very difficult to do. I believe they've since modified that to the system that you have, where it is a non-advalorem assessment, and that makes it much easier to collect the revenue. And I guess I would say, just in terms of the capital aspect of that, I've been doing stormwater projects pretty much my entire career in using either local resources or grant resources and a combination of both St. John's grants to build capital stormwater projects.
And what opportunities do you see for Sebastian on the horizon?
Well, I think we've talked about annexation. That's a big opportunity, and I think that is something that we really will need to focus on in the future as a team and as a community. Other opportunities in Sebastian, I think your infrastructure is well-managed and reasonably well-funded, but as you all have noted and I've heard through your council meetings, the seawall issue is pretty significant, and we need to take some action there. You have a very strong investment in your community by your citizens and by your chamber, and just the folks that I see here in the community are very invested in the city. They care about the city, and they're participating in the city, so I think we can leverage that to do even more great things here.
Thank you. No more questions. Thank you, sir. Mr. Dodden.
Okay. Have you seen the city manager's current contract?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. Once again, I'll tell you, I know you hadn't seen that, so I won't even give Joe a hard time again. Okay. The current contract with city manager has in it a residency requirement and salary issues, and then, of course, the benefit issues. Do you have any issue with any of those points?
As I've mentioned to most of you, I live in the town of Malabar, which is about 15, 20 minutes north of here. That is a home that my husband and I built 25 years ago when we got married. We got married on that property, and so I would very much like to stay in the town of Malabar. I completely agree that it's important for the city manager to be part of the community, which I absolutely will do if selected for the position. Should we move? I certainly don't mind a contractual requirement that says if I, if we move, that I would move to the city of Sebastian, but I would prefer to be allowed to stay in our current home and town.
Okay. Thank you.
A real quick, CRAs, your experience with CRAs?
Yes, sir. The city had the Bayfront Community Redevelopment District in Palm Bay that was similar along US-1. We did not benefit from the direct riverfront access that you have here in Sebastian, so you have many more opportunities. Your working waterfront program is tremendous, and you have a lot of public spaces interspersed among the commercial and residential areas. That really is a great economic engine for the city. In Palm Bay, we were struggling to achieve that because it was very difficult to get direct access to the river. We had kind of a bluff scenario versus the direct access. So I've had experience with that. No tax increment financing, no the CRA regulations and all of that. I've operated with a CRA. We just were not as successful as Sebastian has been with what you're doing with your CRA.
Okay. Thank you. And what do you see the role of the city manager as in intergovernmental relationships? Municipal to municipal, municipal to county, municipality to state?
All of those things. The city manager is someone who is an advocate for the community in all of those venues. And so even as I worked in Brevard, you would see that I was participating as a technical advisory committee member to the Transportation Planning Organization. I was involved with the United Way in Brevard County. We achieved special legislative appropriations for projects as a result of our relationship with our state legislative delegation. We received U.S. Economic Development Administration funds for a big economic development project in Palm Bay as a result of working with our federal delegation. Relationships with county commissioners are essential, especially in Sebastian, where you are intertwined with your fire service and your utility service. So I see those relationships as absolutely critical and have to work hand-in-hand with our elected officials and your relationships to make sure that I'm facilitating that role on behalf of the city.
All right. Thank you. Earlier, you said you understand that it's important for the city manager to be a part of the community. How do you first see, or how do you see the city manager interacting with the public in disseminating information or understanding the concerns of the citizens?
So you will see me out in the community a lot. I will be at your events, and I will be attending your advisory board meetings. I'll be at the chamber board meeting. I will be present in the community, and that gives me an opportunity to interact with our citizens and understand their needs and concerns should they come to City Hall. Certainly open to speaking with them as they would like to come see me and talk about things, but I think that relationship is pretty important, and so I will spend some time making sure that I invest myself in working with citizens and business owners in the community and understanding what they need, whether it's I'm out talking to them or they want to come see me in the office, but that's important.
Okay. Great. And finally, the role of the city, in particular, the city manager, in dealing with the business community through regulation or permitting?
Okay. I see the city's role as a facilitative role, not a regulatory role. Now, obviously, you need regulations, but the idea that the city is in a position to facilitate development activity versus just simply provide rules and regulations that need to be followed, I think is one that is much more in line with the idea of strong economic development. So I see that our development review, and in fact, you have done this recently with your Fire Marshal program, you've taken on that role as a facilitated role rather than a regulatory role, and the idea is to make it faster and smarter. And so I see that as an important role for the city. Back up in Brevard, we did the program with the Economic Development Commission called SNAP, single, I'm sorry, simple nimble accelerated permitting, and the city could be sort of SNAP-certified based on meeting certain criteria for having that facilitative role. And so I feel very strongly that that's an important role for the city.
All right. Outstanding. Anything else for Ms. Han, council? All right. Seeing none, would you like to go ahead and give a closing statement?
Sure. I just want to thank all of you. I know it's been a long day, and I appreciate the time that each of you have spent with all of the candidates. I thought it was a very good process, and I appreciate what you do here in the city. I've been very impressed with your council meetings. I appreciate the collegial and collaborative environment here, and I would very much like to be a part of that. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right. Council, I'd like to go ahead and thank Colin Bazinger, Mr. Griffin, Ms. Williams, Mr. Stokes, and all staff for facilitating the last couple of days. I would say that everyone has done a fantastic job. The goal, I think, of this process was to have very difficult decisions to make, and I think that they have given us that. So this evening at 5:00, hopefully, we can come in and have some good conversation and make a decision on this. All right? With that, we are adjourned.